The T.C. Freeze, located in Montezuma, Indiana. We offer over thirty-two soft-serve flavors of Finney Delicious Ice Cream, Pan-Breaded Pork Tenderloin, Famous Homemade Pony Sauce, and don't forget our Roasted Chicken. Open Tuesday through Sunday, ten-thirty to nine-thirty. To place an order, call seven-six-five-two-four-five-two-eight-eight-seven. We appreciate your business.
All right, we'll get started. Call order. Julie, you're on. Yeah, I know. Well, I haven't seen you for so long, I thought I'd let you go first.
Um, we had one-hundred-and-twenty-four responses in February, which is way above our average. A hundred-and-twelve of those were canned pork. Our collections were, uh, one-hundred-and-forty-one thousand for twenty-twenty-twenty-four so far. Um, we were only at ninety-eight thousand last year at this time, and last year was a big record-setting year for us. So, we're already forty-two thousand ahead of that. We have fully moved to our new billing company now. Um, we finally finalized the accounts with the old billing company. So, I think we ended up bringing forty-two accounts in-house that were not worked by the billing company or had been worked as far as charging insurance, but not deductibles and co-pays and things like that. Um, and Heather and Mary got that stuff all sent out. We're starting to get payments from that. So, we're looking to have another record-setting year this year, which is good. Um, we did send nine accounts to collections and six additional accounts went to litigation for people that hadn't paid their collection accounts. We have two-hundred-and-nine outstanding accounts. That's, um, the old AccuMed accounts plus the new billing company. Most of those, they've just sent out for payment. Um, I am working on our last content submission. I've had to work really closely with insurance because we had a couple of huge discrepancies, like two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars' worth of discrepancies in our last, uh, submission. And it's because they worked their sheet wrong and showed that they had already paid us the RCV value for everything. So, um, we got the actual cash value and now they're doing the reimbursement. So, we should just have one more left and we should be good. We do have one full-time paramedic position open. Um, this is for part-time openings. We have three now. We hired somebody last week. We are still going through the application process. We got, I think, two full-time medic applications. One of them backed out because he was under contract that he couldn't get out of. Um, and the other one ended up requesting just part-time. So, we're back to accepting applications for full-time medics again. So, we're still working on collecting quotes to replace or reamount Med Two. It has been very, very broad. Um, some companies are, nobody is under two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, I don't think, total. But some companies are like three-hundred-and-ninety thousand and some are two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. It has been a weird scale. So, instead of stopping at three or four, we've kind of expanded and we're, we're just getting quotes from everyone that we can at this point.
Should we just buy a new ambulance rather than put all that money in one?
Yeah, that's what we're getting quotes for both.
For both, because I think we ought to really consider looking at a new ambulance rather than putting a ton of money into a one that, you know, is just old.
Yeah, and this one has the worst box of all of the boxes to do a remount on anyway. It's the oldest box that we had in our fleet and the only truck left from the fire. So, we knew that there was going to be additional cost in getting that box, uh, fixed up, but the price range has just been crazy. So, it's gonna take us a little bit longer than we expected to get those quotes. I hope to have them all by the next meeting. It's, I don't know, I'm kind of baffled with the prices and how high they've gone.
Well, what is the price of a new ambulance, Sam? I mean, is it?
It is like about ten thousand dollars, between ten and twenty thousand dollars more from some of our mid-range quotes just to get a new ambulance. So, um, most of them are running around like, I think, two-hundred-and-seventy-five to three-hundred thousand, somewhere in there, which, when we bought Med Four, was like a high-end, top-of-the-line, has all of the bells and whistles ambulance. And now it's just a run-of-the-mill ambulance, the price.
Sure, sure. Well, I, yeah, we'll submit us all of that information, but I mean, I, I would certainly lean towards buying a new ambulance. Not slot for a bunch of money on a piece of, because, Joe.
We're, and that's what I told him. I said, once we started getting quotes, I said, just give us quotes for everything. The, the good thing is because we have a fully functioning ambulance, instead of only getting fifteen-hundred dollars out of it on the trade-in like we normally do, we'll get a lot more out of the ambulance that we have now to either sell it outright or trade it in to get another ambulance. So, that'll knock the price down, but it's still, the price is astounding. Um, we do have our new, or our next crew breakfast set for April twenty-first. I think I sent everybody an email on that, just to make sure that we got it on the calendar. For twenty-twenty-four, we are still working with the Health Department. We're getting ready to roll out the, uh, clinics so that we can do, um, lead testing, cholesterol testing, blood pressure testing, glucose testing, and try to identify some of the, um, health concerns so that we can prevent major health events in the community. We're trying to kind of knock down some of the, uh, need to go to the ER and help people with treatment before it turns into an emergency. We do have a DEA inspection and certification coming up, probably in the next four months, I think, is what they said. So, we're gonna start purchasing our own narcotics instead of getting them through the hospital pharmacy, which is how we've done it for several years. We have had to always work off of our medical director's DEA license and now the state of Indiana is allowing ambulance services to carry their own. Obviously, that comes with a cost, but that's all, we already have that stuff all covered because we have to have certain kinds of safes and certain access codes and the way the DEA mandates is, um, it's much more strict than what we've been doing, but that stuff we've already got, we're already working through. Our state EMS inspection, so we had one last year that was out of cycle because of the fire. We'll have another one this year. I didn't expect anything to change. They come in, inspect all of our equipment, all of our supplies that we carry, make sure that we have everything up to date and that we've got everything that our protocols plus the state law says that we have to have. Uh, we do have our EMT class going right now. It's going really well. We have twelve students that are all passing right now. Um, they're doing, they're in their clinical phase. They'll finish next month. And I think of those twelve students, we probably will see at least ten of them stay within our agency. So, the Grow Your Own, it's working well for us. Um, staff has been doing a lot of increased training. We've got some increased skills that they've allowed. Uh, so, we've got a lot of training going on at the ambulance service. If you stop by, you'll see our training room almost always in use now, which has been amazing. Um, and then we are increasing our focus on mental health and wellness and burnout reduction within our own staff. So, there are several programs that I've been working on trying to implement to make sure that the staff are staying healthy as well.
Any questions? Yeah, sounds like you're very busy.
Very.
Okay, Chris?
This is the invoice for the destruction of the dining beer. I've already had them removed. I wanted to get that done before we opened up.
We appreciate that.
And it came in right off, right on budget. And the Wi-Fi project's done as well.
That ought to be nice. The campers probably enjoy that, want they to be able to get Wi-Fi.
I hope so, it'll work.
That'd be a nice, that'd be a nice amenity for the, for the park.
We're also getting online reservations this year as well. We're supposed to go live any day now, so.
Just keep the locals happy. We don't want those calls.
Any idea when that's gonna be done?
They gotta do a Finney test where they charge a Finney, refund a Finney. So, we're just waiting on that. They're having trouble with the van shake on, so. But I'll give everyone a heads-up on that on Facebook.
Remind me, I forgot. This is, this has been, did we do an additional initiative? Did we pay it? Oh, it's in there today?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I remember we talked about it, but I'd slept since then. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Meese? Always a pleasure to have you.
I know. It's nice you have something to look forward to. I just have a few things here, fifteen, twenty, I think, probably. First of all, I'm not sure I brought this up last time or not, but I was mentioning that in the commission meeting about, um, why Amish weren't paying wheel tax, which we do. And, and two of them came to our meeting and they were very receptive to it. I explained to them, it's not the money thing, it's just the equity thing. I don't know why I have two or three traders, I have to pay wheel tax on when I get them licensed and I may not use them all year, and they were fine with that. So, their only question was, how do we want to implement that? Do we want them to collect that? Do we want to collect that? So, we'll figure that out and we'll come with you guys, see what you, how you want to do that. But they, uh, they agree. Some counties charge it, some counties don't, and they, they really felt we should.
So, it is in the statute that we can charge it?
Yes, yes. And, uh, the one of the gentlemen was very clear. And I said, I was one of the early deniers. I just really denied that, that horses can do damaged asphalt roads. Obviously, they do. And, uh, he said absolutely, and he said if you, anybody ever stops at this, come see four-hundred, some other roads, he knows that Amish horses doing causes those problems. So, they are more than willing to pay whatever their fair share is. I was, I was impressed with that, but pleased with that. Still looking at the, just getting ready to begin this next week, actively pursuing Randy's replacement. I met with, uh, I had road school yesterday. I was a moderator up at Lafayette and Jen Sharkey was there. LTAP was all there and, and they're ready to help with the process. So, did you guys have any suggestions or changes to the work descriptions, that, the job descriptions that I gave you to look at? Okay. Then we'll go with that and, uh, I'll send that up to Jen and they'll have some templates they can look at and see if, uh, if they coincide, if they have suggestions. And once we get a coalescing of ideas of what a job description should be, then I'll bring it to you. Commission will approve it and we'll bring it to you, make sure you got nothing new on that and we'll begin that process. As always, the hope is we have somebody hired by the end of April, so they'll have four or five weeks with Randy before he retires on the, the last day of, last day of May. We are still in the process of stockpiling Duraburn, but fortunately, this year really, roads did not get as bad as we all thought they would be. They're so dry, uh, all that freezing and thawing. That thawing got sucked up as quick as it thawed out. So, really, roads are pretty solid. So, we're gonna be in good shape with that and that's, that's continued. We're getting there. We have yet to move on renewable energies ordinances, but we will begin that. I went down to, met with, uh, Solomon County Commissioners, Bob Davis and one from Puddin County and, uh, we toured some of their installations on the solar and went through some of the processes and they have suggestions if we go that way or whatever we do. But that's still ongoing. We have not passed any ordinances yet concerning that, but we, we'll get to that point. Um, one point that came up, the, uh, State Health Commissioner was here for a meeting, uh, a week or so ago, which is really the first time Commissioner had ever been to Park County. And that was just because Stephanie Law, she was able to bring, bring them here. Had a great meeting on, um, what opportunities may be available for, with the new money coming in. One of the things that we have talked at Thrive with, as you know, our participation in transportation period through Thrive is up tremendously. And that's one of the major things we pay for when we hire, when we pay Thrive, our, our share as our, um, our utilization of transportation opportunities is, is really skyrocketing. And that meals are far beyond what we pay, so the benefits are good to get. But we have another opportunity. One of the things that were brought up in that meeting with the Health Commissioner was simply, as we talked about before, uh, transportation for people just getting to a doctor appointment. And there is a possibility, working through Thrive and with the Health Board, with the new funding mechanism through the state, that those monies can probably come from the, uh, the money now from the state coming to the Health Department. That Health Department can, uh, match grants to use for funding for that transportation for the medical runs, not the general things, but for the medical runs to and from doctors, doctor appointments, hospital appointments. So, I'm gonna work on that and see what, uh, I give Stephanie and see what the opportunities are. I'll get again with, um, Thrive, a CEO, and see what kind of a plan we can put together, how that would work and then see where we are. Also have another opportunity on just transportation period with Thrive, and that is to have our own entity as another county has. Clay County, I think, has one. No additional costs to us, it's just that we, we get one set here, but we have to have a driver and then the driver has to be available on-call kind of a thing as well. And no additional costs on that, it's just having it here as opposed to having it there. But I'll, I'll bring that up to you as we, uh, we go along. And I think really that's about, well, oh, we're still working on, Nick is going to, I think maybe have this time, we're working on a weapons prohibition for the courthouse. It's all surrounding counties have and Judge Williams has to have one in place too. And we're all in favor of that, it's just we wanna make sure it looks right when we do it. So, Nick's, uh, trying to coalesce some various ordinances from various counties around us. So, we'll get something together and get that passed in. That's all I got.
Any questions? Sounds like you're doing good. Okay. Good. Sheriff?
Uh, yeah. Reported collections, year-to-date, it's nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eight-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. Year-to-date housing county inmates in DOC were at sixty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. That's all I have.
Any questions for the sheriff?
Still having trouble with the humane shelter?
Uh, a little bit.
It seems to be an ongoing issue. I don't know. Didn't you say you talked to, who did you talk to, Commissioner?
I talked to Commissioner Yocum and haven't been able to reach, reach back out to him. He wanted me to follow up with him and probably do that later today. But there, Vermillion County's having the same issues that we are in terms of them accepting animals and picking them up on a regular basis.
I talked with their sheriff during a hill climbing, he was there and he wants to meet, we'll talk about that, but I wanna range that with you too, because we're all, all together on that, what we need to do. The latest thing they did, he said was that they, if it's a stressed dog or, or vicious dog, whatever term you want to use for that, if it's fear, they just want us to go have them put out. They don't wanna deal with them at all. That doesn't sound like a humane shelter activity to me.
We currently have one, we've had since August and they deemed it aggressive. So, they want me to have it put down, which I don't know, that should be my call, so.
Yeah. Well, I talked to Cameron, asked me about the history. And from what I remember of it, and me, and Jim, you can maybe, if you remember it, correct me if I'm wrong, but the monies that we always donated, it was a donation or a gentleman's agreement with Vermillion County that we would help fund that humane shelter. And, and we started out, I think it was like ten thousand or maybe it was fifteen, I don't know. And over the years, it's gone up some and we actually got behind mainly.
Well, because they just kind of freelanced.
They just freelanced it up and then we didn't really know or weren't told. But anyway, and that's, that's fine, I think we worked that out. But, uh, there was never any specific agreement, as far as I know, for them to take. There was no contract to take dogs if the sheriff had a dog and they needed to, to do it. It was just, just a humanitarian donation, as far as I know.
So, it's okay with you guys, we can work on and we might have some specifics in what you will do, what you won't do and what's gonna call.
Well, that's probably the best way to go. I mean, it's certainly a commissioner call.
Well, if you remember, that was something really that just George Nicholas and, and Vermain kind of worked out.
They just kind of worked it out and they, and there's no doubt, there's a need for, there's a need for that. And I have, I personally don't have any problem supporting it, but they ought to also show some cooperation with our law enforcement and that sort of thing. I mean, now if they're full, they're full. And I don't know what you, I mean, we recently adopted a dog from Clay County Humane Society. And I mean, you thought we were adopting a child. I mean, we had to go background check and everything just to adopt the dog, but.
And I understand the aggressive dog part, but to me, that's part of what humane shelter.
Well, yeah.
It's their dog.
It's really their dog.
That's what I understand. So, I will talk with the Vermillion County Sheriff, we'll get to meet again and see, but also talk to surrounding counties that have humane shelters and see what their policy is on aggressive dogs.
I don't know, I don't know about.
We need to know, but we've never had that relationship to really know what they should or shouldn't be doing.
No, they came, they came, the shelter came a time or two before the council of budgeted and talked about what they were.
Well, they came once when we called them in here, since I've been on the council.
I mean, they kind of.
How much were they a year?
I think it's thirty thousand now.
Okay. So, maybe we, probably the cleanest thing to be to do, do a contract so that we have, so we know what everybody's expectations are.
Once we meet with the sheriff and our sheriff, then I will go through your, for you guys, I'll go to the Vermillion County Commissioner's meeting and then see if we can begin that process, working on some kind of an agreement.
Of course, the last time I reached out to him, they had had, the Humane Society had a change in leadership.
Yes, they did, and that's where the problem.
And that's where the problem started.
I think when that, I think the guy's name was Southwick, I think.
I think you're right.
Mark South, Mark.
Yeah, that's right.
And he was fine or good and then, and then we had this change and then it seems to.
I think he's the one that said, we're not taking aggressive dogs.
No, that, no.
No, that was, that was a free.
That's what I mean, the new addict, every place.
The new one, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know who the new one is, though. But Southwick was the one, but I think he's.
Commissioner Yocum even said the same thing, this new guy's really not cooperative.
So, I'll meet with the other commissioners, what they wanna do, how we start that. What I don't know is if it's a Vermillion County Commissioner-controlled entity or if it's just a not-for-profit corporation that the two counties just give donations to.
Well, I think that's, I think that's. I mean, that may vary very well what it'll be, but, you know, there is a decent chunk of government money going into this thing.
Yeah, if you have that lever, you can simply say, well, we'll tell them.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with making a fight in the budget hearing about not paying them if they're not gonna be cooperative.
Well, that works for you, like I said, in a meeting with the sheriffs, we'll figure out what they want and then I'll go to the commissioners and tell them what we want. Is that what you want? And so then we can codify that and get an agreement and then go to, go to the board of the humane shelter jointly, saying, this is what we expect. If you can do that, we'll continue our donation. If not, then we'll have to adjust our donation to what we feel we're getting.
Yeah. I mean, there's no doubt there's a lot of animals out there that need help and that's why I've always been like, this is just give them a donation because they need, my gosh, you visit the one in Clay, why? You know, all those people are volunteers. There's nobody down there being paid and they're, they're just trying their best in a bad situation.
And it was a good thing when George Nicholas got that going and got more.
It's a good thing.
There really was a need there. So, it's, it's just.
Well, yeah, but I just wanna make sure everybody understood. I don't think just because we make a donation means that they're obligated to do anything.
I don't think we have any say over them at all.
No, 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 it's just, I don't think so.
Well, what's the alternative?
No, stray dogs.
Stray dogs and cats and.
And they know that. So, the only leverage we'll have if Vermain and, and we, when all we can do on our own can agree to what we would like to expect out of them and go talk, see what we can get out of them, if that can be done. And if not, then does the humane shelter have a path to deal with aggressive dogs? I just don't think it's a sheriff's job, a job to decide, okay, we're gonna kill that dog or we're gonna keep that one. And so you have that dog put down and then somebody shows up and goes, my dog now, I'll give it my dog.
You don't wanna be there for that.
No, I think Rockville had that, didn't Rockville? They shoot a, shoot a dog once and they got big, big trouble from the, from the young owners, even though it was stray and was all.
It's been a long time.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, there were problems, but. I don't know, the dog may have been aggressive too. I don't remember the story.
I'm sure it was, if they did that, but we just need to get a conflict so we know what's going on.
Yeah, it would be a lot cleaner.
Yep.
Uh, to know, instead of us just making a donation.
And that you need your, I think, for the auditor to have an invoice coming in for what we.
Well, I'm sure, sure, the probably, the stake would probably like that better too, when they audited us. So, all right, that sounds like something.
One more thing. We keep track of our numbers and so far, I think, last year we gave them thirty dollars. They took thirty dogs all year.
That's interesting to know, thirty.
How many did you take here?
I don't remember, seventy. A lot of them were just lost dogs and returned to the, their families. But there was thirty dogs they picked up all year long.
Do you keep them at the jail a certain amount of time before you ship, try to ship them over there? I mean, just in general, I mean.
Uh, we tried, we're trying to start a new rule, forty-eight hours, but.
Try to keep them at least forty-eight before you try to.
They say they come out twice a month, but I, it's not been at all, the shelter. But like you said, they are full.
Right, and that's, I mean, that was the way Clay was down there when we were there. I mean, they had animals stacked everywhere. I mean, you couldn't, you've been to those places. Okay, well, I guess just try to work on, see what you can come up with.
I'll try to find out what these guys, well, the sheriffs would like it to be and then I'll take it to our commissioner to get that approved and I'll go to their commissioner, see if they agree.
Yeah, see, we can try to make everybody a little happier. So, okay, Katie?
Right now, we have ratio study at the state. We're going back and forth on what the PLTF wants to see, et cetera, et cetera, formatting. So, it's up there. We're in a holding pattern. We cannot start reassessment till May, so we're just in a holding pattern at this time. I did wanna bring forth a couple of things. I still have those two IDTR cases filed up there. Uh, Marilyn has filed to be the attorney and, uh, we've not heard anything from IDTR. Um, and then next month, I'd like to come before the council and talk to you about, I guess it'll be Senate Enrolled Act now, one-eighty-three, where personal property mobile homes, the county has the option of taking them off the rolls and not collecting taxes on personal property mobile homes, those that are not on a permanent foundation, that are taxed as personal property. But I'll bring all that before you next month.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to that. Drew?
Well, we're hoping tax bills go out the end of the month. I know everybody's anxious to receive them.
We are.
Yeah. And after that, we're good.
We are. It always makes everybody in a great place.
And we're looking forward to it, too.
Sure, sure. Okay. All right, public comments?
I'm gonna give a public comment.
Sure.
Kudos to Julie Landzone and the Park County EMS. I had a situation with my mother where I needed a transport from Clinton Emergency Room to Terre Haute Union Hospital and they wanted to use Transcare, which was gonna be the next day and leave her sitting in an emergency room. And Julie and I talked and within fifteen to twenty minutes, she had a crew down there and had them transported. So, kudos to Julie and her crew. They were very professional, very prompt, and I appreciate that.
What's her time of day was that?
What time of day? It was, we went down the right after, it was four o'clock when we got down to the hospital.
That's one concern, one of the guys with the health department, having the health transportation because people get released at ten o'clock at night, eleven o'clock at night and they ain't got no way to get home.
This is interfacility transfer, so she had to have medical care from facility to facility. It's another huge issue that the state is trying to work on right now, but there's very few agencies that will do interfacility transfers. They, they just don't have the staff to do it right now.
It's good to know. We, we can make progress on this, I think.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we don't need you to go over Transcare.
We don't need you to go over Transcare.
So, thank you for not doing.
I'm trying not to.
Yeah, but I'm not gonna let you, so. Yeah, we'll not do that. All right, let's move on. Uh, approval of amendments for the prior meeting.
There were what, there were?
There are none, we're not, so that's tabled. Okay. Uh, additionals.
Julie asked for training for EMS of the eleven-thousand dollars.
That's for the training school that she talked about.
Yeah, that's our Home World Fund.
And the next one is parking wreck, it's removing the dock out at the lake. And then, um, next one is canine donation. Jason asked for five-thousand dollars. It will allow bell-bell be for current and future canine-related expenses. And then, um, Jason McCard asked for three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twelve dollars. It's to go with the money that they asked for last year because, um, one of the office Alex didn't get on the list for last time and they're adding her so she can go to California to train, to the conference.
And Jason talked to me about that. And Jason talked to me about that. Apparently Lexi Worth, there was some miscommunication about whether or not she was going or not originally. She was not gonna go, and then now she can go and wants to go because of her continuing education requirements. And I said, well, she fits within the parameters that the council had established, being an employee, and that the judge could bring it forward, and so there you are.
It's all kind of like grant money, right?
Right, right. And she's a valuable.
Oh, yeah. See, she probably got more better school than a lot of them.
So, that's what's before me.
Move to approve additional.
Second, most been made in second to approve the additionals, all in favor? No transfers, pay the jury. Most been made in second to pay the jury, all in favor? Maybe to the salary ordinance, Mr. Reitzman?
Uh, this is really just a, uh, a formality to some extent, because the salary ordinance is governed by the, by salary or hourly rates, and the salary side of this was correct, but the bi-weekly calculation for Commissioner President additional compensation was not calculated correctly, so we're making an adjustment to the salary ordinance to correct that.
Oh, this is, this is my chance now. Jesus, now, this is my chance.
I'd kill that real quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Why, you wanna add to it?
Yeah, 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 that was what I was.
That's what I thought you were wanting to do.
That's right, that's right. So I imagine that all the ones we miscalculated would be that.
Yeah.
Well, it's not a deal there. This is one of two minutes, and we did an ordinance.
So that's merely just a correction, just a correction of errors, we're not changing anything.
No, there's no change to the, you'll notice that the, uh, the amended, or the approved amount and the amended amount are the same.
So it's correction of errors, basically.
Correction of an error. Motion approved, since I wrote it.
Okay. Most been made in second, it all fair?
Aye.
So that'll have to be advertised, Mary Ann, for us. So we have the monthly reports. We have already done the EMS. You have another one in there, Mary Ann, the cash flows there.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, redevelopment commission?
Did not meet.
Courthouse Security, man, I was not able to be there, but from, from what I was told, while they basically submitted to the state the, uh, courthouse security plan, and I think Commissioner Me signed it, and there was really nothing else, was there, just to submit that plan?
Yeah, there's acceptable plan, you call it, just needs to go to the Supreme Court actually, so it goes through, and that's done.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't be there, but, uh, planning commission?
The planning commission didn't have a forum, so we couldn't eat, but zoning did approve the health store on fifty-nine, the health supplement, the, the north of you. Uh, they're gonna put up a small building, there's a prepackaged health supplement, it was all on the, and we've been notified that JT's has sold, and then the new owner is planning on coming in, because that was a variance or a reason, so the, the variance did, doesn't go with property.
Jay, do you remind me what that is, the JT's?
Yeah, the grocery store down on forty-one, so, yeah, he sold it to his cousins supposedly, so anyway, they will come in and ask for variance for the new owners, same as we do with the old.
So that's the old kind of peaches that's down there, right there, right there.
But it should just be a matter of changing it from one, variance from one to the other, but it is a variance, not a reason, so it has to be redone.
They're doing the same thing, same business?
Yeah, uh, just different owner, same everything.
But every time they change owners, it has to be?
Because we didn't, if it's, if it's owned, it goes with the property, if it's a variance, it actually goes with the owner, since the owner sold, then it's, it's negated there, so, yeah. But it shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue, so nothing's gonna change that.
Okay, solid waste.
Didn't meet.
Good. All right, new business, we have the encumbrances.
Anything you wanna say about things, Mary Ann?
No.
You did all of it.
Uh, I went through and checked invoices dates and checked every fund.
Well, the, uh, total encumbrance list encompasses eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Lion's share of that, or a large portion of that, always is payroll, um, for the last pay of the year, always gets encumbered. And then there are various other things that were purchased at the end of the year that invoices and claims weren't filed, uh, for the December claim cycle that get encumbered. So there's, you have, uh, both the summary and then each individual one in your packet here.
So why don't you just remind, you almost touched on it, reminder that these are bills that are?
These are bills that are appropriated out of the twenty-three budget, um, that did not actually get claimed and filed through the claims process in time for the end of the year, because commissioners do claims in their first meeting of the month, so anything that was purchased, or an agreement that was made, or whatever, uh, in twenty-three that was not paid out in twenty-three, so for the sake of argument here, something was purch, a piece of equipment was purchased, um, you know, in the middle of December, on the appropriation for last year, it would not have been hit claim cycle, it would not have been invoiced in time for that, and it therefore, the check wouldn't have been made and, and paid. So it can be encumbered into, uh, the next budget year, which is basically carrying this amount of appropriation over into the new budget, so you're not using the appropriation lines for twenty twenty-four.
And some were not paid in January, they didn't hit until the February.
Some of them happen even later, as far as they.
But I checked the date on them to make sure that they were purchased in December.
A big pile was that.
Correct.
A big pile was that.
I bet.
Big pile.
So one example of that scenario like that would be with, uh, uh, the Central Tiff, the town of Rockville, uh, billed for the sewer, some more bills they had for the sewer, uh, in December or even January, on an agreement that was made in twenty twenty-three. Um, so those would be encumberable amounts. Every salary line that is, that first check, the first check you receive, I gotta get this term right, the first check you receive in January is your last pay for the prior year, so that amount gets encumbered, uh, instead of coming out of a new budget appropriation, so. The sum of that's eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. We, that's reasonably close to what we generally see in that. It just varies where it comes from, so.
Okay. Oh, so we need to take, we do need to take action on that, so.
I'll make a motion, we approved the encumbrances as presented by the auditor.
Second.
Most been made in second to approve the encumbrances, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a couple of grant requests. Uh, one of them is from Sheriff's Department to help pay for the Twenty-four National Night Out program. Do you want to say anything?
I think it's, uh, approximately funding for about half of the cost of the spend on National Night Out.
You're asking for six thousand, I think?
Yeah, last year we spent around ten or twelve thousand.
The commissioners have approved it, I just need you to write, you just sign the grant.
I think the motion approved that grant.
Most been made in second to approve the National Night Out, all in favor? Uh, the second one is, uh, for the trip out through, for the conference in Anaheim.
Uh, Jason found a grant that would pay for, um, Hamilton people to go. He, he applied for it, and he's already received the money. We just need you to okay it.
Well, that's interesting.
Uh, he, the grant was for twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty, and I think they only got like nine thousand dollars. Now Rusty brought this to me, and they said, we've already got the money.
So this hadn't even been before the commissioners either, I don't think, has it? Well, you know, we have a process here, I really.
Jason McCard didn't realize we had a process, and he brought it to Rusty, and Rusty said, hey, you needed to do this, this, this.
No, we have a process here, I, do with it what you want.
Well, they already got the money in hand. Kinda like to shut the door, but.
Well, I understand, but you know, I, I think we need to send the message back, that we have a process, and that, uh, that it needs, I know, sorry, you're just to communicate this, but just to let them know we have a process, and they're expected to follow it. I don't care who it is, we have a process.
Well, if Jason had let Rusty know ahead of time, Rusty knew the rules.
Jason knew the rules, he's on it, didn't he?
What did you say, that they asked for twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, and actually we got nine? So who's making up the difference? I know you don't know the answer to that. I'm not asking you to answer that, because you don't know.
Hamilton Center making up the difference, or are they gonna?
That or Hamilton has to pay the difference, since they're sending Hamilton people.
How many people are we up to now that's going to California? Any idea?
Goodness, fifty?
There's four or five county employees going.
Yeah, and then how many from Hamilton?
We've got fifteen plus thousand in that. From the opioid money.
I understand it's out of grant money, but still, it's just. I think we're better, uh, just table it for the next month and hold it and see what's going on.
It says that four staff members are going for this grant.
So that's Hamilton County, or Hamilton, uh, Center of People?
I thought the forward drug court people, not Hamilton Center.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's, I think they're on, that's what they are, we're from Hamilton Center on the drug court, right? I mean, that's what they want to send the whole thing, and there were
Right.
various non-county employee entities involved in that.
Yeah, I thought the forward is our county employee people, maybe it may.
No, I think you're right, and the, and the opioid money, when it's all county employees, it was forward.
Which is what we had said, we'd send the county employee.
But then we just added Lexi, that'd be fine.
And that's the fifth one.
Right, which they talked to me about, and I said, bring it forward, and.
See what happens, so, uh, but you know, I.
Seems like.
And then this is for three more, is what it says.
And this is from, and the grant is from who, the?
It's a.
Well, it says LCC on here. That's local.
If you recall, that opioid money comes in, and it was decided not to give LCC control over that, that commission would control that, and the LLC has to bring in their, out their request and use those funds, and that's what that apparently is, is that request to use those funds. Then they came before you, I think, to see if they can use those funds for that.
Well, they came before us from the county employee side, and we granted those. We did those additionals to, to do that. This grant, whatever it is.
It says it's a pass through.
It says state grant pass through, and then the agency is the local coordinating council, that's the LCC.
Sounds like, sounds like the money's coming from the state, they just didn't give it.
Well, it may, but that's the thing, we can't, I can't tell you on this, if it's not LCC money that's already there, that would go to something else. You know, the sheriff gets grants out of that for various different things, schools get grants out of that for various things, and that's not over, that's outside the opioid money. This is a whole separate conversation. They have their own.
So do you know anything about, you know, so you're from Hamilton Center, do you know anything about this, or you want to come in?
All I know is that I know the, the judge from drug court wanted, the, came back with the request for only the county employees or, or his group from the drug court to go.
Sure.
And then that he sought a another grant to try to allow Hamilton Center employees to go. Now, if it's through LCC, then that would be correct, that that, as Roy's saying, that that is their state-funded LCC that goes toward anything addiction-related types of services. We do the same thing, I'm from Solomon County, we do the same thing in Solomon County as well for those types of, of things.
Okay, well, that helps, I think that helps. Uh, I don't know, I guess, I guess my thing is, you know, I'm fine with you guys doing it, it's just that we have a process here, and they didn't follow the process up there.
As in that part of it?
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know.
We stepped out of all of that, and said, what do you decide to do?
So, so here, so what, so here's my suggestion. I will have a chat with them up there, that they will follow the process from now on. And if you, if you all decide to prove it, if you don't, well, I turn it down, it's, it's, it really doesn't matter to me one way or another, either pass it, or, I don't think we ought to wait another month. I'll have a chat and say we have a process, and you're to follow it, so do what you want. I don't make motions.
While you're having that conversation, find out where the money's actually coming from, because this is right on here, LCC, and if it's that drug-free money that we budget every year, if you recall, those of you, well, we were all on the council at that time, we had that conversation with the director at budget hearings this year, that we ratcheted back the request, because the funding isn't there to support the requests, same thing we do with all kinds of times and all kinds of things in that county budget, right? Well, are we now, we have ratcheted it back, we have cut back the, the opportunity for the sheriff, for the schools, or Hamilton Center, whomever else to use this directly affecting people, however we, they do it, which is not my wheelhouse here. But if we're now gonna pull a bunch of that out of that, since it's a state grant that feeds that, there's no argument there, everybody, I think we all know that. I, that's just basically, we didn't like your answer, that we're not gonna use the opioid money, so we'll go use the other money. And I'm not saying that's what happened, I'm saying I don't have enough information to say one way or the other what it is.
From our viewpoint, it sounds like the judge didn't get approval for, for everybody, which you guys appropriately saw, say you're gonna cover this, and so he went someplace else to get additional money to pay for the other, which, and that's why this is state pass through grant, and they're gonna pass it through the LLC, the state's gonna pay for that, out of a separate, separate.
I don't know.
I don't know. You can't say that from, we, we can't, I mean, that may very well be the case, yeah. It may very well be.
I think, I guess what, he goes to someplace else to get, get the money, and that's why this is passing through, the state's gonna give it to him, pass it through the LLC, and pay for it the other way.
What I can tell you is, we've removed ourselves from the conversation. We have, we have fully pulled back, we are not gonna.
Yep.
And I, and we understand, I mean, I just, we understand. I just, just wanna know if you knew anything.
Yeah, this is your, this is, you're not.
If I had known that this was, I guess, an issue, or, well, I would have asked that Jason come, but I thought that we were only talking about adding Lexi Worth to the, to the conversation, because they had talked to me about that.
This is not, this is not normal. They, anytime that he, I mean, I know from my seat, anytime that he is out searching for a grant of some sort, I generally know about it. I mean, he's said something to you, or to me, or somebody, it's, it's not normal.
I don't know why, I don't know what happened, so. Okay, well, beat that to death. So I'll see what you wanna do.
Well, they already got the money. If, if it's coming from the state, find out it's coming from, from local.
I haven't seen the check. It's, they put it, he put it in our safe, but I didn't see it.
Well, I think even me the pass it or not, I mean, if I find out where the money's coming from, well then what do I do, you know?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't take any action one way or another, so.
It's just kinda like we got backdoored.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you follow up with him, and you know, with the right.
I'll follow up and, and say, guys, something's happening. I agree with Roy, because normally Jason's on top of that, but, so I don't know what, I don't know.
And I had a move, move that we approved the request as presented.
Okay, so there's a motion.
Okay.
Made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right. I will, I will inquire to see what went on.
Then if it's approved, will you stop by the office and sign it?
Well, we just got approved.
Well, yeah, I just approved it.
Well, but he was gonna check.
Well, it's not based on, I'm just gonna find out the information, and it's approved, so it'll go to the commi, it's still, it'll still have to go to the commissioner, so it's not.
Done yet.
Yeah, if they ask, you tell them that it's stills gotta go to the commissioner, so.
But I will, I will tell Jason that you wanna talk to him.
Yeah, or I, I might just call in here after a bit, but.
You might indicate, you know, there shouldn't be others coming forth either after this.
I think that this may be the.
I think the well just went dry.
I will indicate that probably, please hold as far as.
Well, I think we got wet.
Okay, all righty. Well, we have heard from the Mazuma Public Library. They wish to have Sarah Morgan reappointed, uh, to her second term, uh, on the, um, Mazuma Public Libor, Library Board. That's our appointment. Sarah's a former teacher, I'm sure Tom knows her.
I should believe it. Summon it.
Motion made second to approve, or to appoint Sarah Morgan to the Mazuma Public Library Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anything else?
I'll fill in the data.
Get out and sign you. Hearing nothing, anything else?
You have a note on the bottom.
Oh, I know, thank you. Oh, I did wanna mention, um, former colleague, Larry Gaimian, he passed away recently. Uh, Larry was a, was a superhuman being, a Park County treasure, treasurer, and, um, he'll certainly be missed. He always saw the good in people. was a superhuman being, a Park County treasurer, treasurer, and, um, he'll certainly be missed. He always saw the good in people. He always saw the, the best, and we will miss him, and our condolences to, to his family, so.
No, I agree with everything you said there. He was a very wonderful colleague to have on his council, and, and I worked with him on, Tom and I worked with him on school reorganization. He was wonderful there, of course, and, um, wish his family all his sympathies as well. He will be missed, there's no doubt about that.
Okay, anything else?
Look to the jury.
Thank you.